Seven o'clock, I'm calling the Board of Alderman Meeting, Breaker Meeting Session at seven o'clock. So if everyone would, if we could do the board's, please.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Roberts?
Yeah.
Alderman Woken?
President.
Alderman Motley?
Here.
Alderman Borman?
Yep.
Alderman Hudson?
Here.
All right, if I get everyone to stand up and collect the wings, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The set agenda, which has the minutes for the prior meetings, June 17th, 2019 in it?
Yes, I have a comment.
Yeah, I have a couple.
Okay. On page seven, it says Kenny Cooley discussed the alley behind his house. There's a creek behind Kenny Cooley's house. This is behind his, on the south side of the lot, some on Highway 22. Second thing is, the motion was made, accepted to let Kenny Cooley put a gate across the alley. You can't do that.
Not an alley, it's a driveway.
It's an alley.
It's not an alley.
It's an illegal alley.
We did actually find Lynn Berens came in, who was after the meeting, and how, went through, in 1963, it was vacated at one portion, and then after, in 1965, it was actually moved south a lot, so it is an alley.
Oh, it has to be vacated in order to be done that, that's how it goes by the zoning.
It was already vacated. And the information we had, we have two ordinances where it was vacated.
But I mean, in order for Kenny Cooley to block it, this gotta be vacated. It's an illegal alley.
Right, it's no. It's an illegal alley.
Yeah.
It just don't allow that.
Yeah, but it needs to be vacated.
Based on the information we had at the time, we did not think it was an illegal alley, but it is.
On the same page. The attendance, I'm not listed for being there, although I made a motion, I was there. And then the other is the spelling of the word allegiance, there's a few too many syllables in this.
Is there any else?
That's all. Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All vote. If you pass it, the consent agenda. Do I have to, is that A, B, C, D all together? Okay, now we're moving on to accounts payable over $250,000, $555,676.50.
Yes. PDR, done with that work? Who's putting on the, Brad?
Herman. They got it ready, it's just Sam blasting the front end of the paint, so. They did.
But that's a separate contract, then?
Yes. We brought it down, they tried to make sure it was right after concrete, it was right on, so.
No problem with that.
Make a motion, we accept the accounts payable over $1,250,000 in the grand total of $555,676.50.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All vote. Motion passes. That moves us to the section of comments from citizens. I'd welcome up comments from citizens at this point. Something was brought to my attention from a past meeting, something that was said in the meeting that ended up being brought to us, to me, and I spoke with Heather about it, that got said in reference to some people that had trouble with power boxes, let's put it that way, that were paying, okay? And that being said, when we look back through the minutes and the video and everything it was said, it was said from an audience member that was, that wasn't during the comments from citizens time, okay? So one thing I will have to, I want to make sure we get back to, making sure we're doing, is this time for comments from citizens is your time to comment. After that, it's, when we're in session, we can't have any more comments from the, of the audience at that point. If you have any questions, concerns, or anything that may come up that, because I know when I was sitting there, I had some things come up when I was thinking it came to a couple of meetings before I came mayor. I had some things on my mind, and it's, I did the same thing. And so I would encourage you to absolutely keep that thought, bring it forward to an alderman, a mayor, any of us here, after the, after the meeting. We'd be glad to take that up and keep that into consideration for future need of what are we going to do with it, what that might be, okay? So, do I have any comments from citizens at this time?
Linda Borman?
I was like, sorry, Representative Paulson, you're actually on the agenda, I saw you raise your hand, so.
Yeah, you raised, you were next.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You're next to have the comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I have my own spot on the agenda, you didn't miss that, sorry.
We got you, you're finishing on here, so. Go ahead.
Linda Borman, 800, Jason Court. I didn't see anything on the agenda tonight about revoking the tobacco, or the pay at the pump issue that was brought up, and that we supposedly were gonna revisit or whatever, and I didn't see that on the agenda. There was an ordinance approved, I think it was a month ago, about movable items on streets. It just all of a sudden popped up one day on the agenda. Wasn't really much discussion about it, and we approved an ordinance with fines and stuff. How is that information going out to the citizens? Because you can't just all of a sudden do something like that and then find somebody because they got a basketball goal or something sitting on the street, can you? I mean, I'm asking.
I mean, our information is public, it's all the minutes are public. I would imagine, and I can't speak for the police officers, and they are welcome to chime in, and we talked about this before, they're not just gonna go out and start chiming people, but they are gonna let them know that this rule has changed, and that they have an opportunity to move those things off the streets before they get a ticket for it. Now, if they choose not to after that point, I feel like it's, it's completely up to the police officers.
Okay.
Can I give you just a little bit?
Yes.
What we've already experienced?
Yes.
We've had some issues with them. What we've done is we've taken it, give it to Sandy, she sends them a letter, just, just like we do with anything else. We just send them a letter, and if they become in compliance with it, probably.
Well, I mean, it just came up one night, it showed up on the agenda, it was a late addition to the agenda, and it was voted on without much discussion and no way of, you know, I just didn't know, so I just.
It was not a late addition to the agenda, it went out of the original agenda, it was a week before.
Okay, that's fine.
And let me make a comment. Well, our ordinances and the things that we have in place, we want to enforce them?
Well, sure.
And what I'm saying though is, but our goal is to first give the offender the opportunity to rectify the situation with a given person, right?
Okay, that's one of the things that I wanted to ask about, but like, when we raised the connection fees for all the utilities and stuff last year, or earlier this year, no notice went out to any of the builders, and they were absolutely aghast when they came in and found out that that fee had gone up from $250 to $1,000. I mean, we're not letting people know, and I know it's on website, it's on this, it's on that. There's a lot of people in this town who do not go to that kind of stuff. We gotta get this information out other ways. James gets some of it in the paper, but not everybody gets the paper either. And, you know, you're gonna do something with the tobacco ordinance tonight. I don't know that we shouldn't maybe even have a public hearing on that before we institute an ordinance. There are just a lot of things that I have some questions about, so, anyway, that's what I'm here saying, thank you.
All right. I will, touching upon what you were talking about, the pay at the pump situation. We have some information from, from Sydney tonight, talking about that, that they have some options, they being the owners of the facility, if you're an individual owner or the corporate owner, to do some things. What we were gonna do is have a, actually, a, a public forum opening night for that discussion, is what we're planning on doing with that one. Because Heather brought that up and thought maybe it was such a debated thing that we should do that, and I agree 100% it makes sense, so that's what we're doing. So I, I think that we should always err on having plenty of public interaction. I think the one problem we're always gonna be faced with a little bit is there's always gonna be somebody, or a few people, that are gonna say, I didn't know anything about that, I didn't get that, but it's, you know, we do, I think we just gotta do a really good job of all the media ways that we can get the information out of what we're doing and what we're planning on doing, for people to have the opportunity to have the, the knowledge to be.
Well, but I mean, it's just like the smoking ordinance last night. Does anybody in any of the gas stations or the stores that sells tobacco, are they already aware that they're gonna be fined extra if they do this stuff?
I'm gonna assert this, they're not being fined extra, we're just going to be mashing defiance as to what they are already fined according to state law, so.
But do they know that we're gonna be doing that? I mean, the state doesn't even go in and check for tobacco and alcohol, so, you know.
Actually, there's been.
You're wrong.
I was gonna say.
They do, the data percentage show that we have, what, a 16%.
And I don't believe that, Robert. I don't believe that in the least. I worked at Dollar General for over a year, and every time somebody came in and bought cigarettes, we had to have their driver's license because it had to be entered into the computer. So I don't believe that. Now, maybe other places don't do that, but I don't believe the 16%.
It happens.
I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but I don't think it's just the 16% compliance.
Any other comments from citizens at this time? Yes?
Please. Okay, do I speak in the microphone?
Sure.
Well, this one here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. My name's Evelyn Robertson, I live at 221 South Atlanta. I'd like to read my comments tonight. I have some comments and I have some questions. So, the former mayor, Jim, is not here, so, but in the, last time, he had a comment, and he said, and thought the ordinance exceeded the alderman's authority. Did you hear him say that?
Yes.
Okay, so, and Jim has been our mayor for ten, over 10 years, so. Anyway, the other quote I have from Joe Bryson said the city council did not have the right to tell us how to do our business. And then Maida Gibson was also a speaker, and she has some several good comments about cameras. She thought cameras would help, and to follow up on the thefts, anyway, because if they steal, they're gonna go out and do something bigger, so they need to be caught there. I agree 100% that the employees should not have to pay if there's someone that runs off and doesn't pay. And there are, there is, I was told, one or two stores in town sell them gas, and they take it out of the employees' pay if the, if the people don't pay for their gas. Can y'all hear me? Okay. So I, I never had a card, I never have had a card to do that with my, to buy gas. And I really don't want to ever have a card, because I think that leads to having your identity stolen very easily somewhere where you lay it down or use it at the pump. Somebody's watching you all the time, so there has to be a better way. And I'm just suggesting what I heard last month, I guess, that the cards, the cards are not my thing. I'm sorry, I left a page. When someone steals, I'm reading from your, whereas, it was printed off to me by Heather. It says, whereas fuel thefts have the potential of escalating to more serious crimes. So to me, that means if someone stole the gas and ran off, they're liable to do more, a bigger crime. And that's why I believe our policemen should follow up. Say. I have some questions now. First of all, the customers are not very happy with cards. My question is, why did all six of you vote for this, for this ordinance, May the 20th? All six of you said yes, why?
My honest opinion from, I can speak for myself. We had one of the managers in here who had actually asked us to pass it because she was tired of her employees being penalized. So that was one of, I think that weighed on several of our hearts as we heard that statement.
Okay.
That's, that's why I voted for it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I, I think thing, we, we focused on one side of it, and we weren't putting ourselves in your place. And our hearts were kinda went that direction, and we didn't think it all the way through, and we've done that before.
Well, it's just.
Well, I think there needs to be some clarification too. This is not only prepay, you do not only have to use your card at the pump, that's not what the ordinance says, it's prepay or preapproval. So the, the gas stations still have the opportunity to preapprove someone. They can preapprove you to pay inside when you're done, they can go ahead and turn on your gas pump, you can pump like normal and go in and pay like you normally do. You could go in and prepay. So they have the opportunity to let you, for the preapproval part. So I think people are missing that part, and they're, they're really focused on the pay at the pump, and it's not strictly pay at the pump, you do not only have to pay at the pump.
Well, I didn't miss that, Heather, but to me, that would make two trips for me into the session to pay.
No, no, because they can, right now, they pre, some of them preauthorize you. You, you go to the pump, and you're standing there and you're waiting, and then they say, pump three, you're authorized. They're preapproving you at that point, it's the same process.
How do they know who I am?
A lot of them have cameras, or they can see you out the window.
Well, and I think that's part of it. I, I think part of it is that they do know probably, because most of us are, if we go there freely, we'll get the same place. And so they don't want you to be inconvenienced, so they have the opportunity for those, those customers they know to be able to give them the opportunity to preapprove you, start to pump up, let you get gas and come in. They also say with credit, we had some businesses that had credit accounts and wanted to be able to preapprove, and it'd all be put on ice, sodas, whatever it may be. And we did have these folks in here talking about how to take down their, their pay. I agree with you, I don't think it's right, but the labor board said that they had signed something when they, they took the job, saying that they were agreeing that, that they would be held, could be held accountable for any lost drive-off type situation, so.
Pardon me, who would be held accountable?
The employee.
That is ridiculous, it's absolutely not fair.
We both agree upon that, but the labor board is, is absolutely telling that it's not something we can jam.
That's why.
Because I worked in store, I would quit.
That's why you would have probably voted with us, that's, that's what we thought too.
Well, why did you vote for this, that night?
We can't, we can't control.
May the 20th, you voted for it.
We can't control what a business does, so.
You could try, you could vote no.
Let me, let me help you with something. For the citizens' comments, it's fine to have, we'll wanna give you everything you need, but this is not gonna be an interrogation of, of a legal vote, it's went all, and we, it was six to nothing, it was unanimous. It was a side plot. If you'd like to talk to your, your alderman, first land off the agenda here, you're welcome to do that, and, and show your discontent with their vote. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna be questioned on something that we had planned discussion about.
I'm not here to argue with you, I'm just here to find out some answers and ask some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm, I'm here for all of you. I know we have democracy, and I know we have freedom, and I just want to voice my opinion on things. So there are a lot of elderly people that wouldn't be able to follow up on that, and so I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, to vote no on this ordinance, if you all vote again. And I wanted to say, there's lots of people that are unhappy about it. I'll say this as nice as I can now. Centralia has 4,000 citizens, approximately, that's what census was. There are seven of you sitting here that will be voting.
There's six.
Six.
I only vote unless there's a tie.
Oh, you wanna vote, well, you could, you would have been able to vote, because they all voted six.
Yeah, it was six to five. It's gotta be three to three.
Three to three.
Three yeses, three no's. That's what's up.
All right, sir, thank you. I agree, yeah.
Yeah, so I can't. I liked it a lot, a lot of times.
I'm in high school, but I forgot, I think.
No, you're fine.
Okay, so, anyway, I'm just gonna finish this paragraph and then let you have it. I'll say, Centralia has 4,000 citizens, and there's seven here, meaning is what I wrote down. To make the laws, all six of you and number seven would make the laws, right? Would make the ordinance.
Just the six.
Just the six.
Yes, but, okay, if there's a tie, then it would be up to you.
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I'm asking. I would ask you to vote no, and inquire, and give it more time, and let the citizens know about what's going on.
Let me help you. You're against the pay at the pump, it's inconvenient, and, and we've got a lot of that feedback. That's why we're gonna have an open forum, okay, for the citizens to come, okay?
I didn't know it, that's annoying.
Yeah, and that's what we're gonna do, because we rethought it, and we, we got emotional about some people that were, that not, having, they were losing out of pay, right? Working all day and they're losing their pay. Bottom line is, we've looked it over, and now we, we need to rethink this and make sure that we have a good ordinance in place, that we're not legislating business of how to keep themselves from having laws, okay? Now, at the same time, we're trying to make it to where the police department doesn't show up and have to spend time and effort when they could be at somebody's home that maybe is having a tragedy or something seriously going on for a bunch of information we don't even have. It's, it's like show up, the guy was tall, he was white, he was middle-aged, and he drove a dark SUV. That, that doesn't help them. Now, if you've got good information, and that's what we're gonna demand through this thing is, you're gonna have to have a good tag information that you can clearly see, that's very legible on a, on a video, and, and then we're, that would give them something they could do something with without wasting their time. Because we want to make sure that our public safety is not tied up with frivolous things, that they have no control or we're gonna help.
I agree 100% on that. One thing I read on this, I read it to you all ago. When, when the gas is stolen, that's the best time to catch the thief, or else he's gonna go and do something else, more dangerous.
Or maybe they've already done something else.
Well, that's just really, it's written.
Yeah, I'm gonna say it, yeah.
But I think a lot of our police department, they're all good, they're there for you when you need them. I give them 100%.
And we want to make sure they're available, it can do all for everybody, right? Help the businesses as well, so that's what we're trying to do, keep our time for the right thing.
But may I ask where the forum is gonna be?
Here.
Here.
The open forum is for the public.
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, you have a date on that?
August 12.
August 12. I hope everybody reads the paper then.
And we'll spread the word too. We try to do with the hard.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Alderman, thank you very much yourself. Any other comments from citizens at this time? All right, well, that brings us to the aldermen's representative, we got Sherri Dawson Rice here tonight, so thank you for being here.
Hi, thank you all for allowing me to meet with you. I always like to come at least once per year. I'd be happy to come every month, but I don't think you all want me to do that. Each year, I bring you all a free flag, and if you need more, just let me know. We had a very productive session this year. As you all know, I passed the law for Centralia to do the public safety sales tax, which you passed. Can I ask, how's that going?
Yep, slow and steady.
Okay, good, good. So I just wanted, you know, let you know if there's anything I can do for you, don't hesitate to reach out. I feel so comfortable in a city council room. I've worked with Heather for a long time, and Kathy Colan, before that, I was city clerk of Hallsborough for 30 years, then mayor for four, so I've worked in government for 37 years, so I tell people I started in kindergarten, so. I wanted to tell Bob that the governor vetoed the repeal with the helmet law, so motorcyclists must still wear a helmet. Also, the state treasurer, Scott Fitzpatrick, has made me the official ambassador for unclaimed property. I've returned about a million dollars back to people. I met with the Centralia library board last week, and they didn't have any money this year, but last year I found in money. So what I'm gonna give Heather, the city of Centralia has over $50 on one line, and what's remarkable about that, when it says over 50, you never know how much over 50. I have a homeless guy that I know that lives in his car, here in Boone County, and I saw his name on there, that he had four over 50s listed. And I said, look, you've got at least $200. So I helped him, we sent it in, three weeks later, he called me, and this practically homeless guy said, Sheree, the check was for $2,400. So another listing here, it, it looks kinda weird, it says city of Centralia, KS Industrial, and then it's like a, a trust, so it might be having something to do with a bond or construction or something, and it's all still over 50. There was also the Centralia Fire Department has between $40 and $50. And I, and Heather, I, we were talking before the meeting started, there's something listed as Centralia United at 144 South Rollins, but there isn't. So I would recommend if you call the state treasurer and ask them, I was thinking it might be the United Way, which is no more, so I'll just leave that here, and you all have money coming to you. Last year, maybe two years ago, I can't remember now, I wrote a letter of support for Centralia to do a community development block grant, but as I drove in, the buildings are still up, so can I get a status update on? I can't even pronounce the name of that. I'm gonna call it Nagasaki, but I know it's not Nagasaki.
Canary Island, yes. It's been quite a process, but the notice will go in the Centralia Fire Department Guard this week, Wednesday, we're going out for bids. It's already on our website, links to the bid packets, and the bid packets have been sent out to any people that are interested.
Good. I know you all will be glad when it's down and gone. I, I, everybody will, I love Centralia, my family, my mother's side is from Centralia, I'm here all the time, my great kids and I love the pool, and, and the anchor fest and everything. So you all have such a wonderful community, and I come up here and eat Mexican all the time, so. I'm just, stone's throw down the street if you need anything, and are there any questions for me on any state government business? Okay, well, feel free to reach out to me if you need anything. And Mike, I have one question for you. The, the library board's flagpole broke, rope, broke, and I think they were gonna see if the city's bucket truck could clear it back up.
Electric lineman got it fixed the last day.
Yay, awesome, thank you very much. Thank you all, folks.
Thank you for being here, appreciate you being here.
Bye.
Now we move on to the rest of the agenda. Finance, there's none, permits and licensing, none, is that correct? Legal, amending section 16-27, 16-31, and 20-8 of the city code regarding the sales of tobacco products, and adding fines for violation from this section, these sections.
I would like to point out, in our discussion last week, we talked about combining F and G, and I asked Sydney about it, just to make sure I was thinking this correctly. F is actually pertaining to the clerk, and G pertains to the retailer itself. So those are two separate things, and they're outlined under the state law, so I let them separate in our ordinance as well.
Any other questions about it in there at this point?
One question. Our current ordinance, if we ran through this, is that actually against the law of selling cigarettes?
Right now, it's against.
Right now?
No, because there's, there's, okay, so.
Or alternate.
No, local, local ordinances can usually be somewhat more restricted in certain areas than state law, but state law still is what controls, so in this case, since state law allows these cigarettes, vaporizers, alternative forms, you know, it's de facto allowed within the city unless you want to limit it, or in some cases, regulate it. But in this case, you cannot completely close off that sphere. So there's only certain areas that the state allows you to restrict, so. Does that make sense, as I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I kinda wondered why we're doing this instead of the state or the federal government, because it's more of a national problem than it is a local problem, I mean, it's much more than a local problem. And I just wondered why the state and the federal government don't do something. They should have done something when they first came out. They should've done something when they first came out.
I think that's part of the reason with our discussion, we didn't wanna change the age to twenty-one.
That's what I'm saying, they can't at that point, we talked about that.
Yeah, we're just trying to clean it up, so it includes the right penalties that tie up with the state and includes the other types of tobacco stuff.
Yeah, 'cause they wanted us to move to twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Correct.
Paul, uh, Wilkins, do you wanna read the?
Sure. Bill number, please.
Two, three, zero, seven.
Two, three, zero, seven. Move the bill number two, three, zero, seven, given its first read by title only.
Second.
Motion's been made, passed, first reading, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
And ordinance amending section sixteen dash twenty-seven, sixteen dash thirty-one, and twenty dash eight of the Code of the City of Centralia, Missouri, regarding the sale of tobacco products and adding fines for violations of these sections. And move the bill number two, three, zero, seven, be given its second read by title only.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been seconded, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
And ordinance amending section sixteen dash twenty-seven, sixteen dash thirty-one, and twenty dash eight of the Code of the City of Centralia, Missouri, regarding the sale of tobacco products and adding fines for violations of these sections. And move the bill number two, three, zero, seven, be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, uh, roll call vote.
Alderman Motley? Yes.
Just roll call vote, yeah.
If it's one, just get roll call.
Roll call, yeah.
Alderman Motley? Yes. Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Amending section sixteen dash twenty-seven, sixteen dash thirty-one, and twenty dash eight of the City Code regarding the sale of tobacco products and adding fines for violation of these sections. A bill twenty-three, zero, seven has been passed, ordinance number?
Three, zero, two, five.
Three, zero, two, five. Okay. That moves us along in the actual agenda to purchasing, and there's no agenda for that?
No, and we are hoping to have some bids back for the AC unit, but place department, it's a budgeted item, but it is, uh, over twenty-five hundred dollars-ish, I think. Uh, we asked for two quotes, we received one, did not receive the other. So, hopefully, we'll have that soon for you all to refer to.
Pretty hot over there, or?
No. It's just an update of what we currently have. We have AC, but it's actually the coil and the furniture that need to be replaced there, as old as the building.
Okay.
And, uh, well, he, our guy said, "We probably shouldn't use that next one." And it's been adapted from the old, uh, what was the old, I forgot. R twelve up to one thirty-four now, and so it's not the most updated.
It's updated.
Yeah, it's not the most updated.
Got you. Thank you for that. Okay, it moves us to, uh, old business, uh, discussing the Randolph Road project. We got, uh, drawings are all done to this point.
We received the ESN, we actually have the copies of the ESN, so we're sitting at a chance to review those.
Okay. And I asked for it to be put on the agenda for us. Before, I talked with Lincoln Brown this last week about the narrative ability of the building to be torn out. He asked about this, uh, the grant for this project as well. Uh, we had a pretty good discussion about it. Uh, he was questioning, and he said that I'd be very direct with him, somebody told him, and wanted to know kinda where we were at on that, because we've been, it's been going on for almost a year and a half. And they'd like things to expediously, uh, move through quicker, and we were kinda dragging our feet a little bit. Wanted to know where we were at with that, that's why we were having a discussion about it this, this evening. And that's what we're doing. Um, you know, uh, I'm just gonna tell you right now that, uh, Randolph Road is something that, uh, we, we, the city councils worked on for a long time. I've talked to the owner, uh, of the business that this road would go to, had very great discussions with him. Uh, we don't own any of the land that this road goes through, it's not an industrial park. It goes to one business. And, and, correct me if I'm wrong at any time, uh, we have now, we've got a variance to our own specifications for a road of how we expect the contractor to finish the subdivision of thirty-eight foot wide curb and gutter, is that correct so far?
Yes.
And we've looked at an option B, and that option B was to make it a cheaper project for us to be able to swallow or get started. My question is, why in the world are we still thinking it's a project we wanna do at all? Now, that's my thoughts, I've been waiting a long time to say that. And economic development, it makes not a damn bit of sense to me, and you put that in the paper, because the fact is, we're not gonna draw industries out somewhere where we only own the property. So, now you all can have all the discussion you want to about it.
But we don't have plans, and we don't have bids. I'm not sure we've busted this yet.
Well, the, the question is, do we wanna go get bids? We've got plans, do we wanna do the road? Do we wanna move forward and take people's time of getting bids for an inferior project? Because the way I understand it, as you told me the other day as we talked, and I might be wrong, I was told there is no A and B, do it the right way, a thirty-eight foot wide, because of cost.
What we voted on and approved in the meeting was the least expensive option, which was, uh, I don't remember all the details of it.
Twenty-four foot wide, I know the details of it, trust me.
So, it was the least expensive option, 'cause we didn't, half the board couldn't swallow the money that was, uh, potentially needed for one of the other options. And I can tell you, half the board's probably struggles, or at least I can, I guess, should speak for myself. So, I'm spending any of that money when I drive on the street to town that are, that need, uh, some serious work done on.
You know, I, I think that's, I think that's a point, 'cause I heard that from everybody I went to and talked to now. Right? The bottom line is, in good consciousness, I, I would, I would, I would not be able to believe the fact that, you know, I, I told people that it was something that we needed to look into, that it was still going when I became mayor. And the bottom line is this, the other thing that you have to think about, I don't care if you put in there that, "Oh, we're gonna get to making it thirty-eight foot wide in the future," okay? By doing that, as I talked to Lincoln Brown, he said option B was because you needed something cheaper. And he said, "Option B," I said, "What is option B?" You're a smart guy, Lincoln. What does option B do for us? What do we do when we do option E? When we decide that we get a variance, we from our own specifications, when we tell a contractor and developer to finish a road to, we say, "Do as we say, not as we do." We open when we set a what? A precedent. A precedent, and that precedent does nothing but lower the standard of what we expect Centralia to look like moving forward. That's going backwards, folks. We are not here to go backwards in what we expect from people to develop our town and spend the money to do that. Because the first thing I would do is I would put some money in my pocket if I was doing the last phase that got approved, and I'd say, "Well, I'll see you in court law, I guess, 'cause you're gonna tell me to do something you yourself won't do." I'll get to it. Let me get to it. I'll make it thirty-eight foot wide here in the future. So, as far as needing to get a bid, I don't know if we need to get a bid on something that we shouldn't even be doing. That's my thoughts.
Well, the landlord out there was promised that this road would be built.
Yeah, the landowner was promised by somebody who did not have the authority to make that promise.
No, that was part of the negotiation when he bought the property.
No, when the landowner got a promise from the previous city administrator.
It was before that that he got a promise.
But no board voted to make that commitment.
That, well, no, that's not true. This board.
Based on all the notes I've seen.
This, well, you may not have been involved in it, but this board, uh, whether any of us were on it or not, did make, uh, an agreement to sell that property to that guy, and part of that agreement was that, uh, that money would be set aside to build that road.
Which is a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars we have set aside.
That money cannot be spent on anything else.
I do, I understand that, but if the road was a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, or even the dollar figure was, I'd vote for it.
It was three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, but, you know.
Plus the grant money.
You know? And since the day that it was voted on and tied in this room, and the mayor broke the tie to go ahead, we went from about, I think it was fifty-some thousand dollars to, we're about eighty, eighty-two to eighty-five thousand dollars on that road.
And that vote was just to get the plans. Because we went through with the plans, we might as well get, get the plans, and we can.
Go ahead and get the plans, we have the drawings for the future, if we ever deem it a need to, to put a road in after.
And the only reason we did that was 'cause of the tie vote.
And the cost.
We're all ready to say, "Let's get the plans and have some plans at some point."
We have the plans.
Now, you say it serves one person out there, it doesn't, it serves, there's two landlords out there, and it would, uh, make a connection to a residential street, uh, that is in there also. So, you know, two landlords could actually develop, uh, property off of it, and that would benefit the city.
Yeah, I asked one of the landlords, he was hearing a break, and said, "It was Ron." I talked to Ron, I said that there was, there was, what did you tell me one day, Heather? That there was a rumor. What was the rumor you heard of, of that road potentially with Ron and building?
That a rumor that I heard was that he was gonna build more duplexes on his property.
So, I went and asked him, looked him in the face, and sat down and asked him, "Is that true?" Because I don't wanna misrepresent anything that happened, because this is gonna be a contentious situation in the future. And I asked him, I said, "If we don't, if, if building that road, are you gonna add more duplexes?" He said, "No, that has no bearing on whether I build the road or not." If, I mean, that road, whether I put more duplexes in. I'm not planning on putting more duplexes in at this time. I'm planning on other projects that I've got going, and that's not in the mix in the near future, at all.
But it is commercial property.
It is. And the owner of the commercial property will decide what he has to do. If that commercial property needs to be developed, then they can, they can develop just like they develop in town to town when they have somebody to do. Versus at the expense of our streets that are in this repair as it is. The street budget, what is, Heather, what is the lowest budget we have on, in the city?
I don't know which street.
But we were gonna come up with, let's say it's cheap, four hundred thousand dollars on top of this other money. And eighty percent of the people in town don't even know what that road means. They will when they start drinking coffee at the thing. Then the next thing, it'll be getting back to the county commissioners and this and that. We will have gotten grant money, and it will have caused a hell, a, a hellstorm here, it's a dragon of constituents wondering why we're doing that when the streets are knocking teeth out. And I'll, I'll go further to say that, if the roads were paved in silver, it would be crazy. Why would we put a road in for one constituent business out there anyway? Now, if you think I'm passionate about you, you're exactly right, I am. Now, if you all choose to vote and do this and, and go on and, and have people's time spent on bidding something that's an inferior, uh, specification to our, our, have at.
And our, our vote was to move forward with the engineering plans and with the cheapest option on there. And that's, that's what we had voted on. So, I guess it would come down to whether we want to.
And to be seen, so that we can see whether we have the money or not to do it.
Yes.
But doesn't, doesn't mean we have to go out for bid, does it?
That's what we voted on, so unless we wanted to rescind that, 'cause that was the direction of the board when we voted. Um, the second vote that night, the first one was a tie that was broken by the previous mayor. The next vote was to go with the cheapest option for the plans and go out for bids and then make our next decision.
That's.
But it wasn't agreed by the whole project.
Yeah, it wasn't agreed by the whole project, 'cause I tell you right now, I've got serious heartburn over the project.
Well.
My vote is still the same from my initial.
Well, I think we're too late to, for Steve Stark to project now. What, we got two years to get it done?
We had three, so we have about a year and a half to.
Yeah, they're gonna get it done, you're gonna have.
But does, but does that matter?
Yeah, definitely, because we have.
You know, all the way through this.
It's gotta be done in that year.
I'm understanding that, but.
So, that's what I'm getting at, does it, do we need to go on and go out for bid if it's not even gonna be getting done?
Yeah, I agree with that, but my question, should we be bidding at period?
No, I don't think we should bid at period.
All the way through this process, I don't think any of us, we're unsure. And I, if anybody looks me in the eye and says, "That's not correct," I think, we talked about this and talked about this and talked about this, and we found every excuse to put it on and put it on and put it on. Part of us wants to do it and half of us doesn't wanna do it, because we're gonna be looking at these people right out here, and I, I, I might do that, because the gut feeling said not to do it. As a business person, I'm gonna be honest with you. As a business person, if I owned this city, somebody will be fired if you build this road.
I haven't wanted.
That's the gut feeling, but we can't make a decision, 'cause we're scared to. And when you're scared to make a decision, that means something's telling you as if the right thing to do. But we can follow through, but I don't wanna waste a bunch of contractors quoting and bidding, and if they hear what we've said, next time we need them, they might not be around, you know?
Regardless of the contractors, it's our group here, they're gonna spend hours and hours working on bid packages and.
We spent eighty-some thousand dollars to get the plans, we have the plans now, right? Forever.
Yes.
Whenever we wanna build a road, we're gonna have.
We haven't said plans before.
Well, but that's, that's one, we don't wanna go over that one. But, uh, uh, we don't.
Don't bring us up, don't bring us up.
Don't even have dollars deep, really.
No, don't bring that up, I'm already done to have a heart attack up here. Don't get me going on something I don't know about.
Wait.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you don't.
Well, I'm done, uh, next.
I mean, I don't think we oughta go out for bid, I mean, they're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to do that big of a project in a year and a half.
What's that motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
There you go.
The motion's, the motion's been made, uh, by Mr. Magley, has been seconded by.
Go ahead, man.
Alderman Wilkins.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a roll call vote at this time.
Okay, let's clarify this vote, let's make sure we understand this.
Okay, the vote is this, tell me if I'm wrong. The vote is not to, not to go out for bids for option B, the cheapest option of the drawings, here we go. From the last.
A yes vote is for that.
A yes is saying we're not gonna go out for bids, so if you say yes, you're in favor of not going out for bids.
Not go out for bids for any option.
Any option.
Right, it affects when it stops the project.
The project, and we.
Pretty much, yes.
Now, now, the question is, if that's the case, we'll have to give back, we gotta figure out, I wanna make sure this gets done the right way. We'll have to give back the grant that we'd like.
We have a agreement.
So, we're okay, all right, so that's what we're doing. The vote is yes, in, in favor of, uh, basically not going out for bid on any options based upon the drawings we have today that are current, uh, for, actually, I think, show all, all drawing for both, both that road. Uh, and voting yes would say that we're ceasing the project and we're, we're not gonna do the road. Is that correct, in your opinion?
That was the answer I was looking for.
Okay, so, roll call vote, yes in favor to not do the road, or no, and not in favor to continue to try and give bids to do the road. Roll call vote.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Motley? Four. Alderman Gorman?
No, I think this is a decidedly anti-economic development attitude.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes not to do the road, just continue doing the road, uh, five to one. That's the old business, new business, the mayor, do I have any appointments? I'm gonna alert you. Uh, the city administrator.
Uh, our report's in the packet. Uh, we've had, talked about the police car that we sold, the person that we paid for is offered to the second, lowest to the second highest bidder, that person didn't want it, so we put it back up on auction, and so we sold it this time, and we did get, received the money, and we have already taken it for three thousand five dollars. So, it's about three hundred less than what we, our municipal fund. But we do have the money.
Yeah. City attorney?
Just wanna let you know, you guys are not having municipal court this month, because I'm having surgery on Friday, and I will be out from Friday to Friday, so any municipal. So any municipal court settings will be set for next month in August. We do have, I think, three trials scheduled for August still. So if you wanna see your municipal court in action and kind of observe what's going on, check out August's municipal court.
Top pop.
Thank you.
Break for peace.
Um, so you got.
That's it.
Uh, simple.
Uh, the N and L meeting, the annual meeting, is September eighth through eleventh. So if anyone is planning on going, life goes in St. Charles this year. I'll let Ter know, and we can get you registered. Um, so.
I guess it's, so.
You should.
Yes, I'm excited. After last night, isn't that, after last night, it's. I've been, I've been giving, I've been giving my, my notice. So, all right, uh, as may arise.
Hi, I'm Mike.
Yes, sir.
Kenny Coolie would like to move forward on the vacation of that alley. Uh, it does have to go with zoning and zoning, so. I understand that the uh city staff uh is opposed to the idea of vacation. There is a way of taking care of both uh aspects, I believe. We could vacate the alley, but he could give back and he's put to the city for access through there. And then he could go ahead and he could put a gate on it and keep the people out. That he's wanting to do. Mike Colvin, uh, his daughter lives next door. I talked to him. He would be in favor of that. Uh, so I think we ought to move forward with the vacation on there, but we should write up an easement for him to sign that would allow.
Turn it really back right away.
Right. Not, not a right.
But, but to use.
And, and accessing.
Access, use, yeah.
So that way it can be restricted to only city uh people using it.
Got you. And I'll have to go over the zoning to do that. We need to write up. Yeah, and I'll be, when is the next zoning meeting?
Uh, we need to set a meeting date.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get with you.
Member and.
I'll be with you.
Within the next couple of weeks, we need to set one.
I'll be with you as well.
Do you have quite often on that?
For the zero lot lines?
Zero lot lines, and then Ron Luke has, I don't know if it was, but I think so. Those.
It's too late for him.
The two houses. For the um subdivision?
Yeah, it's too late for that. That's already taken care of. More than forty-five days has passed. That goes on the city council.
All right, anything else that's may rise? I'm either, can a motion?
Can motion return. Second.
Motion just been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meet as.